Okay, we will call to order the January 2024 meeting of the Sycamore Township Zoning Commission. My name is Roger Friedman. The chairman, Mr. Meese, if you would take the role?
Sure. Mr. Swanson?
Here.
Mr. Barrett?
Here.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Roos?
Here.
I'm here as well.
Okay, first order of business is the approval of the minutes from the December 11, 2023 meeting. We have received a copy of the proposed minutes. Anyone need to make any further corrections or changes? If not, anyone motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
No, second.
Mr. Barrett? All in favor? Aye. Okay, the minutes are approved. Moving on to old business, there's a case 2023-16 MA where the applicant has requested the continuance of this matter until the February 12, 2024 meeting. So we will continue that matter until the meeting in February. The next case is 2023-17 MA. The applicant is Kenwood SCA Two LLC. It's for property located at 4751 Lux Boulevard, and it's a major adjustment to a PUD. Jeff, if you would give us an update on that?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. It's case 2023-17 MA. The subject property address is 4751 Lux Boulevard. The area of focus is the vacant area at the corner of Kenwood Road and Happiness Way, and that's just located right here across from the Kenwood Town Center. So it's this empty parcel here at the corner of Happiness and Kenwood. The applicant is Kenwood SCA Two, Inc. The current zoning is D multifamily residential district with the special public interest district authorized, known as the suburban center corridor of Kenwood Montgomery Road corridor overlay, which is an SPI district. The request is a major adjustment to the PUD from case, original parent case 2018-12P2. The proposed use is a mixed-use building with one basement level of parking, one floor of retail, two floors of office, and seven floors of residential that we'll discuss. Just a little bit about the subject property characteristics. The size of the property in total of everything is 7.17 acres. The kind of the area of focus for this mixed-use building is approximately 0.82 acres. The frontage on Happiness Way is, for the whole property, is 604 feet. For the area of focus, it's about 192 feet. For Kenwood Road, for the whole subject property, it's 527 feet. And the Kenwood Road for the area of focus, so this parcel at the corner, it's about 188 feet. The gross density, if you aspire an encore, if you divide the number of units by about the acreage, it's a little over 53 units an acre. The ISR of the major adjustment case, 2023-17 MA, is 5.57 acres or 77.68%. The ISR of the original case was 5.39 acres or about 75.17%. There is some disparity in terms of the acreage there, and I think some of that has to do with the hotel. In between 2018 or so and now, there was a minor adjustment case which amended the footprint slightly of the hotel, and that might account for the bump. But generally, the site is rather linear from what the original office space that was proposed to now. In terms of surrounding zoning use, to the north, it's OO Office; to the east, it's EE Retail; it's the Kenwood Town Center; to the south, it's C Residential; and EE Retail; and to the west, it's B Residential. For background, the applicant, Kenwood SCA Two, Inc., seeks a major adjustment to case 2018-12P2, as I mentioned. From that case, the following uses were approved: 248 apartment units, which is called Aspire. It's been finished with a certificate of occupancy from Hamilton County; an 801 space parking garage; a hotel that's 134 keys that's under construction; in the subject of this major adjustment case, a six-story office building, which was proposed to be 130,845 square feet, which is the primary subject of this case. So again, just to kind of go over, this was the parking garage that was approved; this is Aspire, the residential apartments; this is the hotel; and this pad was where the office was supposed to go, but now is the proposed mixed-use building. Due to substantial resulting changes in the office leasing and interest rate markets that were not perceived in 2018, the six-story, 121,904-square-foot office building approved in case 2018-12P2 is not feasible. Just to refresh what it looked like, this was essentially it right here. So there was one floor of parking, one floor of retail, and then there's the four stories of office above that for a total of six. Called the Encore at Kenwood, and just throughout the case, I'll just call it Encore, the applicant seeks to amend the 2018-12P2 plan and build a mixed-use 11-story building with the following uses: basement level zero, which is down here, the entrance would be of Happiness; it would be trash facilities and space for 45 vehicular parking spaces; ground floor one, which would be here; there's two balconies that face Kenwood Road; it would be one floor of retail, office, or restaurant uses. It's 15,700 square feet, and it's on the same elevation as the ground floor of Aspire and the Residence Inn Development. Floors two and three, which are right here, the first three floors are a combination of masonry. That's two floors of office and a total of 37,000 square feet. And then floors four through 10 would be seven floors of residential. There'd be 133 residential apartments with 105,511 net square feet. In total, 98 one-bedroom units are proposed, 21 two-bedroom units are proposed, and 14 three-bedroom units are proposed. As for the staff analysis for the land use plan, the proposed mixed-use Encore building is consistent with the township's land use plan 2030. In consideration of future land use, the subject property is designed as mixed-use. Adjacent to the Kenwood Town Center focus area and the Jewish Hospital focus area, this proposal accentuates the vision of continued upscale retail service, office, and mixed-use development. The installation of the above noted uses is beneficial to the vitality of nearby retail service, institutional, and office uses that are in and near the Kenwood Town Center and Jewish Hospital focus areas. So in other words, the added residential will help the nearby retail and institutional Just some information on the building heights. Did it two ways. One, from sea level, if you kind of think that way of what everything spatially looks like from the sea level, but also what it looks like from a linear height level. Aspire is 58.5 feet, and that's the development that was built at the first part of this development. At sea level, that's 893.6 feet. The Residence Inn is 60 feet tall. At sea level, that's 901 feet, three inches. The 2018-approved office building was proposed to be 100.5 feet tall. At sea level, that was 921 feet, six inches tall. So out of the three buildings on the site, that was going to be the tallest. But with this proposal, Encore, it's supposed to be 145.5 feet or 970 feet at sea level. In comparison to other tall buildings in the area, the Kenwood Collection, on the mall side, it's 138.17 feet tall, but at sea level, that's about 1,024 and four inches. On the 71 side, the building is 216.83 feet tall, so it's on the 71 side. Jewish Hospital, currently, the Jewish Hospital tower is 105.66 feet tall, but plans show a future possible additional two floors, which would bump that up to two stories taller, and that would be approximately 133.66 feet tall if those two floors were added, which would be a little under, would be approximately 11 feet shorter than the proposed Encore. Nordstrom is 47 feet, seven inches, and Redstone is 95 feet tall. If Encore were built, just looking at it from a sea-level perspective, Redstone would actually be taller in terms of just how the earth is arranged. In terms of a height study, the applicant provided this height study showing the height of the proposed Encore development. Of course, here is the Aspire development, and then the folks that live on Frolic Drive. Across the street from Kenwood Road is the Town Center, and then off to the Kenwood Collection. Just as you can see, the Kenwood Collection is indeed taller, just with the topography. In terms of Frolic Drive, under the study, only the top three floors would be able to be seen from Frolic Drive. Side arrangement, Encore is proposed, and in generally the same footprint as the 2018-approved office building with the same setback. So on Happiness Way, the building will be sighted 4 and 1/2 feet off Kenwood Road; it'll be sighted off 12 feet. So whether it's the office building or this proposal, the setbacks were the same. In terms of parking, the parking for the Encore is sufficient. In case 2018-12P2, a 25% shared parking provision was approved, which would apply for this case. If this major adjustment is approved, a total of 932 parking spaces will be physically present on the entire subject property. You get that by adding 801 plus 86, which is the surface. 801 is the spaces in the large garage. 86 is surface spaces. 45 would be under the new proposed Encore. In case 2018-12P2 for the office building, which included retail and a restaurant use on the first floor, adjusted for the 25% shared parking provision, the required parking count was 400 parking spaces. And you multiplied 533 required spaces by that 25%, by .75 or accounting for that 25% provision, and that's how you got 400 parking spaces. In the context of only the Encore parking demand, with a restaurant office space on the ground floor as proposed, the Encore would require 363 parking spaces, which is 37 less spaces than the originally approved office building. For Aspire, Residence Inn, and Encore, with the 25% shared parking provision factored in, the required space count is 789 spaces. In this scenario, the site is overparked by 143 parking spaces. In other words, there's 143 extra parking spaces than what's there. In comparison, again, comparison to the parking space requirements, the office building approved required more at 400 than Encore, which was 363. In terms of traffic generation and pedestrian safety, the Encore proposal would present a use that doesn't kind of have rush hour traffic. There's not a bunch of office floors letting out all at once. It's, I think, a little bit more static because of the residential use. In comparison to the office building that was approved in 2018, and in context of Kenwood Road and surrounding road network, staff finds that the Encore produces a de minimis trip generation increase. Staff does not find this to be substantial. Why does staff say that? In a June 6, 2023 update to the trip generation study in the context of Encore, Keegan Anderson, professional engineer of Wolfert, Inc., notes a net increase of three trips in the AM peak period, or AM period, a net decrease of total primary trips in the midday peak period, a net increase of 26 trips in the PM peak period, and a net increase of 65 trips in the Saturday peak period. Mr. Anderson notes that in Wolfert's engineering judgment, this increase is negligible when compared to the total amount of traffic on Kenwood Road and when distributed across the roadway network. When spread out, when spread across the peak hour, the total increase is less than one car per cycle length, and is not sufficient to require an update to the original approved traffic study. On June 28, 2023, Jeff Newby of the Hamilton County Engineers' Office noted that the findings and conclusion appear valid. One thing to note is with the study, if Encore only has one restaurant, the study assumes two, the de minimis trip generation increase would be made even smaller. Just a note on pedestrian safety with sidewalks surrounding the Encore, the proposal sufficiently insulates pedestrian circulation from vehicular movement. In terms of building materials, adverse array of high-quality building materials has been presented. This satisfies the building material and design standards of Sycamore Township Zoning Resolution 8-4.3.8 A, B, and C. In working with the applicant, the proposal has come a long way since, I think, what was originally proposed. Originally proposed, there was a number of different materials, a lot more kind of lap board siding, things like that. And the proposal that we've been working on for this site, or this Encore proposal, has proposed upgraded materials. I can kind of go through some of them. On the first three floors, a big change was, these all changed to, the first three floors would sort of be the retail office and office, primarily changed to a brick masonry material. On these two sides that face Kenwood Road, there's what's going to be called glass curtain wall windows, which is kind of a wider, it's kind of an architectural bank of windows. Prior to that, it was just, you know, regular windows, so that certainly dresses up the development. And then just another highlight, wider, kind of more architectural hardy board was proposed, similar to the Aspire product, and it provides a more, perhaps aesthetically clean look. So those were some of the big changes, and I would invite the folks from CIG to add on to that. I know they're materials experts here tonight. With that, there would be just one staff recommendation, that number six on the building materials key be switched from a metal glass storefront window system, and just note what they are going to use, a curtain wall window system for these, it's really these bank of windows right here on Kenwood Road. It's an important architectural feature. In terms of signage, wall signage, the proposed Encore wall signage is consistent with the scale and scope of Aspire's wall signage. Regarding wall signage, staff will propose the following condition: on the western elevation of Encore, no wall sign shall be sighted on floors four through 10. And that's just so the residential folks to the west would not be able to see any wall signage. In terms of monument signage, two monument signs proposed on the Kenwood Road elevation: a monument sign in front of Residence Inn, which would be 14 feet wide, 3 and 1/2 feet deep, and 6 feet tall; and another monument sign in front of the Encore, 10 and 1/2 feet wide, 3 and 1/2 feet deep, and 6 feet tall. Both signs are proposed to be set back 0 feet from the property line or right-of-way line, and staff would support that. In review of the wall signage and the monument signage, there's a thought that I think the wall signage is appropriate. You could consider, you know, is it appropriate to have a monument sign next to much of the wall, especially on the Encore, next to a lot of the wall signage when it basically is going to say the same thing? So is that, one question I would have, is that monument sign duplicative or duplicative? But that would, I would leave it up for the zoning commission to consider. Again, on the hotel, there's Residence Inn signs that will be all over the hotel. Do they need a monument sign? But granted, I think with any retail vendor that you talk to, whether it's a hotel or McDonald's, you know, any signage they can get, they're going to ask for. It's just up to the township to consider. In terms of outside agency comments, the Hamilton County Engineers' Office, as I mentioned, noted that the findings and conclusion of the chip generation port appear valid. MSD reported sufficient sewer capacity, and we all have updated comments that have confirmed this from 2018-19. Greater Cincinnati Water Works, the Greater Cincinnati Water Works notes that sufficient water supply is available. Stormwater, Hamilton County confirmed that sufficient existing stormwater detention infrastructure is in place. Duke Energy, Duke confirmed that sufficient gas and electric capacity is available. Sycamore Township Maintenance Department notes that the, you know, the sidewalk along the right-of-way of Happiness Way is really important, so that would be included in the plan. With me tonight, I have our Sycamore Township Fire Chief, Rob Penny, here. He can answer any questions. But in addressing comments of the Sycamore Township Fire Department, Elevar Design Group will be the architect of record for the project located at 4751 Lux Boulevard. These are comments back from their architect. Elevar will design and permit this building as a high-rise structure and follow all relevant high-rise code requirements. That's something that the fire department asked for. Elevar notes that there will be approximately 10 EV charging stations located in the garage on the first level of this building. The garage portion of the project will be fully enclosed. Elevar notes that the drawings will show one elevator from the garage to the penthouse sized to handle an EMS transport gurney, which was a request of the fire department. It sounds like the applicant has no issue with that. The building will also be designed to integrate a radio repeating system if required by testing after construction. So I think the idea there is they build it, see if they need to integrate a radio repeating system, and then kind of go from there. With that, Chief Penny, do you have any comments related from the fire perspective, or kind of your just, how you look at a high-rise building and just some of the nuts involved?
Yeah, the, fighting a fire on a high-rise building is totally different than what you see on television, where the building's on fire and you see ladders up and trucks around it. When these buildings are designed, they follow the Hamilton County Building Code and Ohio Fire Code, and they're very, they go into a whole different set of codes versus just a regular business type of building. When I was approached by this, it was, it's better to explain that when these kind of buildings are built, it's vital that we have the high-rise type of firefighting stuff put in that building, and that includes, well, the building would be fully sprinkled, so that answers that question. But the, having the stand pipes in the building with the hose cabinets in the stairwells, the fire pump in the building, it pretty much puts that building to be self-sufficient for a fire, where it, we're there for the manpower to operate things, but the building is designed to have all those operations in it. So saying that, when, if the building catches fire, our firefighters will go in the building and fight everything internally. And we have, we have standards that all of our equipment that's on the trucks has to be mobile enough to where we can pack it up and take it into a building like that and up to the floor that's on fire. So our hose packs, all of our nozzles, everything that we would use is all mobile, and we would use the stairwell, go up to the floor that's on fire, and we would hook up into a hose cabinet to an FTC connection, and we would just fight the fire from that area. So you don't, you won't see hose lines hooked to a fire truck and taking hose lines into a building, so on and so forth. Everything's done internally. So that building pretty much turns into a fire truck as far as pumping water and supplying everything we need to suppress a fire. So a building, as long as, as long as the building has all the fire codes in place that we know it will be, and that it has access around it, so we can get our trucks around it, then it's totally a safe building for us. It doesn't, it doesn't create any kind of a problem, no worse than any other tall building. Any building in the township that's over three stories is considered high-rise as far as, once that our ladder truck won't reach, you know, any higher than that, well, it'll reach higher than that, but that's where they consider it to be a higher type of building that would fit under a high-rise type of scenario. So we have multitude of those buildings in the township, and we're totally, fully prepared to, and have the equipment to fight a fire in any type of a building that gets up into those levels. So for me, I mean, we look at the plans very carefully when they're submitted. We work with the designers and the construction people to make sure that they put everything in place where it's supposed to be, and that was one of the things we addressed with the cot, cot size, the elevators that are big enough to get a cot in it, so we can do that work on the EMS side of things. But as far as the firefighting goes, there's not, it should be a pretty safe and pretty easy building to work with. There shouldn't be any problem.
Thank you.
Can I ask the chief a question? The garage, the height of the garage, will the medic units fit in that?
No.
They'd have to roll everything from the outside.
Which we have to do with every other parking garage in the township. Yeah, yeah, no, fire trucks or medic units, neither one would go into that.
Go ahead, Jeff. With that, I'll just finish up. Just for some additional staff analysis, under the proposed major adjustment, kind of getting back into the code, staff finds that the general standards for the consideration of the PUD plan approval are sufficiently met. That's standard Sycamore Township Zoning Resolution 18-7A through J. As noted above, the Encore is consistent with the future land use plan, noted above in the report. Next point, similar to the Kenwood Collection, since Encore would be sighted on a major or two-year road approximately 470 feet away from the closest residential single-family dwelling, and further buffered by the Aspire residential building, staff finds that the Encore does not violate the visual and acoustical privacy of the area. Given the similar scale of the surrounding area, for example, the volume of Kenwood Road, the massing of the Jewish Hospital, the expansiveness of the Kenwood Town Center, and the height of the nearby Kenwood Collection, Encore's height and density will fit the character of the area. Given Encore's proximity to Kenwood Road, Encore will not substantially alter the community's character nor will adjoining property owners suffer substantial detriment because of the development. And just from earlier in the report, and in review of the line of site rendering on page one of the report, early in the report, only the top three floors of Encore would be able to be seen from Frolic Drive, or Frolic Drive. And I would also highlight that the Aspire would provide a substantial kind of step-down buffering system. In other words, it's five stories tall, and then on the backside of Encore, on either side, there is, there's a landscape fence area that's been kept up, and we've been working with the applicant to keep that up with landscaping that's died. Finally, a PUD site arrangement and building characteristics in Sycamore Township can be modified if the Board of Trustees votes to approve the case eventually. Sighted approximately 470 feet east of the closest residential single-family dwelling to the west, given Encore's site arrangement near Kenwood Road, buffered, as I mentioned, by the five-story Aspire residential building and garage, staff does not have concern that the Encore exceeds the SPI district's general height standard of 40 feet. Many other buildings in the district exceed that target height, including but not limited to Aspire, the Kenwood Collection, even Nordstrom, Redstone, and then Jewish Hospital. With that, for recommendation, staff recommends approval of the major adjustment to the PUD with the following conditions, and that recommendation would be as proposed, which would be the, I guess, 11 stories, the one floor of the parking, one floor of retail, two floors of office, and the seven floors of residential. The following conditions will be: all conditions of case 2018-12P2 are in full force and effect unless modified by this case. The wall sign plan shall conform to the site arrangement and dimensions as shown or amended. If approved, the monument signs shall be sized as follows. I left that TBD if there's any discussion, but it would be what they propose if the board went with that. Both monument signs may have a 0-foot setback from the Kenwood Road right-of-way. On the western elevation, no wall sign shall be sighted above the third floor. Digital signs shall not be used on wall signs or monument signs for the subject property. All lighting associated with Encore shall conform to the zoning resolution standard of .5-foot candles at the property line. Ground floor one of Encore may be used for any combination of office, retail, or restaurant uses. Next one, Encore shall be designed and permitted as a high-rise structure and follow all relevant high-rise building and fire code requirements. Encore shall be designed to integrate a radio repeating system if required by testing prior to consideration of a township and zoning certificate of occupancy. At least one elevator from the garage to the penthouse sized to accommodate an EMS transport gurney shall be incorporated into the Encore project. All elements related to this condition, unless specifically stated otherwise, shall be incorporated into the plans prior to the issuance of a township zoning certificate or certificates. Number six on the building material key shall be switched from a metal glass storefront window system to a curtain wall window system. Unless amended, all building materials shall comply with the representations made in this case. And finally, all landscaping on the 7.16-acre subject property shall be maintained in healthy condition. And that condition really just comes from the township's experience with the site. The developer's done a great job at keeping things alive, but it's just keeping things alive. Especially in the back of the project, there are two elevations that face residential, and it's important, I think, to the Residence and the township to keep those things, those plantings going in healthy condition. So with that, are there any questions?
Anything? Mr. Meese?
Not this time.
Go ahead.
Jeff, could you elaborate on the monument signs, since these plans are kind of small-scale for us to see? Maybe zoom in on that and describe, where you were saying some of this appeared to be redundant? redundant and give us a little better clarity on that.
So like with a lot of, well, I'll say this, monument signs can be very subjective, or signage in general can be very subjective. So what one person thinks is a lot, maybe the next person doesn't. So I, you know, grant that. There are two monument signs proposed and I, it's a good question, Mr. Barrick. The first monument sign for the Encore is proposed up here near the intersection, if you can see my pointer, it's, it's right here near the intersection of Kenwood and Happiness and that sign is proposed to be six feet tall, three and a half feet deep and ten and a half feet, no, 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 fourteen, yeah, fourteen feet wide. And then if you come further south towards, you know, the Montgomery and Kenwood intersection, you know, in front of the hotel here, there's another monument sign, if you can see my pointer down here, right here, and that's proposed to be ten, ten and a half feet wide, three and a half feet deep and six feet tall. And my only point, and it was, was kind of primarily with the, the Encore product, that sign is rather duplicative because you have, you know, for all the retail tenants, you'll have the retail signs up top here, retail for this other tenant. There's also, I'll go over here, there's going to be retail on the backside of the building. Let's see here, I'll blow this up. There's apartment signage, there's office signage on the north elevation that's facing Happiness, retail. This is the project signage, so this would probably say like gallery, something like that. On the east elevation facing Kenwood Road, you have the apartment signage up top, you'll have the retail signage on these corners. These were those, those were those bank of windows are and then project signage. And so that, that monument sign on this east elevation on Kenwood Road would probably go about right here. On the west elevation facing Aspire, you have the office signage, that's very appropriate and retail signage, very appropriate, nothing above the third floor, so the residential will not be able to see it. And then on the south elevation facing towards, you know, Kenwood and Montgomery, you'd have Aspire here on the side. It says, it'll, retail down here. Really for Encore, really the only point is, the question is, does the Encore product need a monument sign with so much other wall signage nearby? And then also the project sign, you know, that's down here on the corner, you can see it more clearly here. It's, you know, I'm sure the sign will say the gallery at Kenwood or whatever and then, but it'll also say it here too. And I just, the question I pose is, is it redundant? But I'll, I would really just leave it up to the, the board on kind of what you thought on that.
Okay, and that, that monument sign is not shown in this rendering at all?
It is not, but it would go approximately right, if you can see my cursor, it would probably go approximately right here.
And then the side, you referenced earlier that the sidewalk was isolated from the street by landscaping buffer, but it looks like the, from the plan view, your monument went all the way out to the, beyond the sidewalk, I think, which rendering may not be correct?
It appears that the sidewalk is, is, Mr. Barrick is right here, if you can see my cursor on Kenwood and then would stretch on the.
So there is no landscape isolation then as per that report for your answer?
That would be correct. If anything, what I meant is the sidewalk is certainly not the street. There is a sidewalk there and there's a path for pedestrians to safely walk.
But it's right at the curb line.
That's right. If, if the, I'm just hypothetically, and I'm not recommending this, but if the board wanted to see the sidewalk not be on Kenwood Road, you know, these, in this tree lawn here between Kenwood and the proposed building, that sidewalk would then have to get moved in, these trees would have to be moved. And I think one of the original conditions from the two thousand and eighteen case was that these trees remain and remain in healthy condition. So that would kind of upend that. My recommendation would be not to move the sidewalk.
Okay, I just want a clarity on that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Jeff, where's Lux Boulevard in this picture?
Lux Boulevard is the official auditor name for the property and I've had that question and it's, it's what the auditor calls the property, so that's the official name. In, in the state of Ohio, the Ohio Vice Code requires that counties provide names of all streets and addressing. Fortunately, the township doesn't have that control under the Ohio Vice Code, so it's really a county function of why it's called Lux Boulevard and I'm, I'm not sure, but all I can say is that's what is on the auditor's website, that's why it was called that.
Okay, but there's no road call, there's no, it's not road itself called.
That's right. There is a practice, not only Hamilton County, but other surrounding counties, that private roads, private driveways can get a name and then they show up on, you can see it sometimes on the GIS, they'll show up as a certain name or whatnot. But it, it was not surprising to see that, just because it's a practice I see with the county, but I can't explain why.
Any other questions?
Just a quick follow-up. You mentioned two signs before and you showed one that was down by the hotel. That was approved with the hotel project?
It was not. So that, that is why the applicant is proposing it here.
Oh, so the, the second sign is proposed as part of this application?
That's correct, yeah. It sounds like Residence Inn would like a, would like a monument sign and so that's why they propose it. And so I would just leave it up to the board to provide your thoughts on that. But yes, it would be two, two separate monument signs. The, the one monument sign would be for the Residence Inn right here to the south. The northern sign would be for Encore. Those signs are six feet tall, just the Encore sign is a little bit wider.
And the, the hotel will have Residence Inn signage on the building?
On the building, yes.
Okay, anything further? Okay, tonight, anyone who's here has the opportunity to speak. We're going to ask the applicant to speak first and then after that, anyone else besides the applicant who either wishes to speak in favor of the application or any opposing thoughts, you're free to do so. When you do speak, we would ask that you come up to the podium over here by the microphone, give us your name and your address so that we have that for the minutes. And with that, we'll start with the applicant. If anyone is here for the applicant, you would come up, give us your name, address and/or affiliation and anything you wish to add to what Mr. O'Kader said.
Thank you. My name's Brian Creco. I'm the senior vice president of, of construction for our group. Great job presenting it, Jeff, thank you. The only request I would make on a change in like the, I'll say the, the verbiage up there, the curtain wall is, number six refers to like all of the glass on that ground couple floors. You know, curtain wall just, you know, because we're talking about it, definition of curtain walls, it attaches to the face of the slab, so it goes all up past the slab the whole way, so it looks like a wall of windows. All of, yeah, so those corners are number six. We, that would get changed to curtain wall, but all of the other retail stuff is storefront, which is what we see at every, you know, office building and mall, that's just, you know, a big, huge bank of windows with clear anodized in them.
Perhaps could we add a, could we add a fourteen?
Yes.
That says curtain wall?
Yes.
And then just put a new fourteen on it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what I'll propose for the condition when we get there.
Yeah. Yeah, other than that, you know, we appreciate your consideration, obviously, you know, our, our preference would have been to have an office building on this site years ago when we had it under contract and, you know, unfortunately, the economy and COVID and, you know, you know, hindered that and the, the individual or company that we had that agreement with had to walk away from the site when COVID and the office market is not very lively anywhere in the United States, let alone around here. I mean, there's just obviously office buildings being converted everywhere you look to apartments, you know, for that reason. You know, and this, this is the, now this is the minimum density it requires for us to make this project work at, you know, at this number of stories. Otherwise, it's, you know, it's just not a feasible project for us. So, thank you.
Mr. Greco, excuse me. Are you with the company? You with Elabar?
I am with the developer, CIG. I manage the design and the construction side of the group. So all of the kind of design-related questions that, you know, that, you know, that Jeff referenced, I was working with him and working with Elabar, who we hired to do that and Will Burton, all the different jurisdictions to get all that information together.
One, one question I do have is, just from practical experience, I know that Jewish Hospital has a fairly significant number of helicopter flights coming in and out, landing patients and taking them away. Have you discussed the height of the building with Jewish Hospital at all?
I would have to get information back from Greg Fusaro, who is our main development partner, that he's handled a lot of this upfront. His daughter just had twins, so he's visiting the twins right now, so he's unable to be here. I, on my end, I have not, but that is not, you know, my side of the business, so I could get with Greg and get back with you.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the height of the building. It is higher than what was initially proposed several years ago and I would be concerned and, you know, obviously it's not a plane coming in, but I know that certainly where you do have a flight path, there's, there's a limited height, what you could have on a building and, and I would be concerned with approving something that, you know, would be contrary to what the hospital needs in terms of their flight path for the helicopters.
Sure, understood.
So I, I think we need to get that information. So, Jeff, can I?
I, I don't, I would just note that the FAA probably would, you know, there's probably FAA regulation related to that, but I think it's a good point.
I'm certain that there are, you know, so I would, you know, that's, that's an item that certainly needs to be addressed. I mean, in terms of personal health and safety of everyone around there, so.
Sure.
Okay, anyone else have any questions for Mr. Greco? Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, item number five on material description says ACM panel or Hardy and there's two different quality levels, I guess, on the paint finish. Hardy with a generic paint is, has one lifespan. The ACM is a much more substantial, high-performance finish on it. So do you have a preference which one you're going to? Are you, you going to be going with the Hardy? I think it'd be good to have that defined before we go forward.
Sure, and I could look into that a little bit more. I mean, you know, when, when we were working through this process, you know, we obviously had an original building that we, you know, looked at, you know, submitting. We received a bunch of feedback back and we've tried to incorporate as much feedback into that as we can while also, you know, I'll say trying to manage a budget to be able to build this. You know, just the, you know, I'll say this is the, the skin changes that we have and the building changes that we have made to date are roughly a nine-hundred, two million-dollar increase to the project. You know, we added these, you know, the, I call them the eyebrows, but up at the top of the corners, you know, to give it more visual appeal on the corners. You know, added the curtain wall, you know, the comments came back that the bottom would be, preferred to be masonry and stone, so we made all of those changes. The, you know, the, the real architectural push, I'll say, for something different in the middle was to have something different in the middle to break up the, to break up the long span. So whether it be a color or material that, you know, I'll say that wasn't decided and, you know, we're, obviously, we're in this very early schematic phase trying to get approval for the project. So, you know, in saying ACM or Hardy, I wanted to give myself flexibility to, you know, like it, Kenwood, our Aspire project, you know, we went with a product called Stonewood, which is, you know, an ACM, you know, for some of those main elevations to help break it up and provide a higher-end look, you know, that's, you know, it, I just, I have not gotten to get to the end of the train on specifying every exact material. Now, we're working with Reading Rock, working with our architects to try to, you know, figure out what, you know, what is a feasible budget, you know, given, you know, the parameters of the building.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
There's anyone else here for the applicant? If you have anything to add? If not, we'll go to anyone else in the audience tonight who wishes to make any comments with regard to the application. Again, if you would step up to the podium and give us your name and address and any comments that you wish to make.
Hi, I'm Nancy Aubrick. I live at fifty-eighty Kugler Mill Road, just around the corner. I walked here. I've lived in the area for thirty-three years, so I'm very familiar with the traffic, the lights, the changes. And when I, when I heard about this, I was pretty shocked at the size of the, of the building and the height, because we've already lost a lot of, of the dark skylight at night and the neighborhood has changed a lot and I, I understand, you know, there's always progress, but I just think this building is too big. And I have similar concerns about the helicopter, because I can hear, there's, there's quite a, quite a few helicopters that land at Jewish. And I would think, you know, this building would attract a high rent, but once people realize that there's a helicopter landing as frequent as it is, they may be not so interested in living there on a regular basis. So bottom line, traffic, lights, noise, the skyline would be changing. I would think I could see lights all night long. And yeah, I, I understand, you know, there was a change in the economy, an investment was made, things changed. Now it's really not feasible with the current plan and a proposal is being made. But that's not the fault of the community. Community should not have to pay for a poor investment. And I think we need to think about overall the impact to everyone in the area, what this building would do and the amount of traffic that would be on the road. The other question is, what if, what if this, what if we say, I, I'm saying, don't approve it. And then the next question is, well, what could you do then? You know, what, what's the alternative? That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else here to make a comment?
Yeah, my name's Erv Mooreman. I live at forty-seven oh-four Dunedin and I'd like to thank you guys for making my neighborhood official. You put the big apartment building behind us. Yeah, why they had the theater was never supposed to have windows, it now has windows. Now you go put this big building, take a look over to our neighborhood, you're taking all of our privacy away from us, totally. And I think it's ridiculous. And another thing, you could ask Jeff, it took me over two years before they put the landscaping behind my property like they were supposed to. I mean, it's ridiculous. It's entirely too tall, six stories. That's all it should be.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Rita Lambors and I live at seventy-nine thirty-three Frolic and I think the building's too high. You were comparing, you know, ten stories, I'd say six, no more than seven should be there. I'm got, I don't want to see three stories of this from my house, thanks for telling me. But it's just too big and you compare it to the Kenwood Collector Collection, that's like four blocks away. There's nothing around here. I'm afraid of the helicopter too. In fact, I brought it up to some of my neighbors and I think they rode into it. The helicopter, many times, I haven't heard it late at night, last two months, going, whether it has something to do with it, but in the summer, I mean, eight to ten, you know, like ten to twelve at night, it wakes you up. They fly over the house. What are they going to do with this, this size you've got? I don't know where the, where the picture of the pad is according to where the height of this, and I don't know the angle is what I'm saying. But they don't, they hover, they hover up there. They don't just fly in and then fly out. They fly in, they stay there and then they, you're talking about a half hour, forty-five minutes of noise. And let's see, that's, I have other little things that I thought of. I just think it's too big, too tall. And far to the parking, the traffic is going to be bad. I don't quite understand all of the, with the parking garage, the parking garage, I know that's not this development, it's the other development, but you still come out on the same street. And I think there are going to be problems along that line. I don't know what goes on with the parking garage, it was supposed to be TIF and if you look at the, it's not, TIF as I understand is supposed to be public park. And if you look at the, it's not, TIF, as I understand, is supposed to be public parking, like the Twin Towers that leaves off of Hosbrook, where you can just drive in and drive out. Well, they've got brick walls on entrances. I don't know if you've ever been over there. And on the thing, it says on the, where it says "public parking," there's a sign that says "call the office" or make this, make notification with the office or sign, you know, "call this number." And I got, I drove by the other day and took a picture of it, and it's just straight walls. That's, that's from what I understand is the public parking. And public parking should be open. And I don't quite understand what's going on there. Also, everybody's asked me different times, what percentage of the facility that's currently being rented is actually leased? And I don't know. That would be nice if you happen to know the answer to that.
Yeah, so those, the picture that you just showed.
Mr. Greco, if you could, or ma'am, if you could just direct the question to the board, and then the board can ask, and then he can come to the mic, and it'll pick up for our minutes. So if you could direct the question to the board, and then he can, they can direct it back.
I directed it. Okay, board, I'd like to know how many people are actually, what percentage is being leased? You know, of all the 400 and something spots that I think they had.
You're talking about parking garage or?
I'm talking about the regular apartment complex. People have asked me that, and I, mm, I don't know. And I was just wondering how many of the apartments, I mean, you know, in the actual, in the facility that they're leasing now, what percentage is filled? And as far as the parking garage, I have no idea what's going on there. I know it's not, I've been told from neighbors that people are paying, I'm not getting, I don't know any names, but people are paying to park in that garage, it's not public. And at one point, I had a meeting with Craig, and he told me he was going to charge for parking in that garage, for the extra parking, for the part, for the offices and also the things. I had a meeting with him at one of the coffee shops, and he came to my house the first week he introduced the project. So, I don't know. Like I said, it doesn't look inviting when I consider, what I learned about TIF when this started. And the original project, if you remember, three floors were supposed to be given to Jewish Hospital for parking in that garage. So he's, his aim was for a contract with them. And when he found out it was TIF, that kind of went away.
Good. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Just to note one thing for the record, the parking entrance for the public parking is approximately right here on the site. I think, due respect to the two pictures of the doors, I think those pictures of the doors were for, over here on Happiness, and those, I think, are just maintenance doors, but the public parking entrance is open and it is, it's inside the site of right here.
Is that the side of the door?
I can see if there's a.
There's a side door, there's two in the front, and there's a side door, side entrance. And that is the gate that goes up and down.
Yeah, so this, see, there's not a new Google Earth, but I think those two pictures of the doors are right here, and I'm not sure that those are public access, the public's access point is, if you can see my cursor, it's right here.
It's around the side?
It's right here, yeah.
Right on cursor.
If you could see me, if you see it right here.
Yeah.
And then if you go right here, that's where the public entrance for the parking is, so.
So that sign, even though it's parked, it's era, it's funny, anti-sign, because I got the sign of it. So it's on the side of the building, that's the sign.
I see.
That's the sign that says "public parking."
I see.
And that's the most dominant thing. And also, I forgot to tell you, there's parked cars from this side all the way down to Kenwood Road. There are four or five cars all the time there. It's not going to be a little messy? Is that going to be eliminated, the parking around that area?
Yes, the Board of Trustees have passed a resolution that would remove all public parking on Happiness Way from Kenwood Road up to Frolic, so that's in the process of going away.
Up to the house, beyond the house?
No, up to the intersection of Frolic and, what's the?
That's still, the house is there. That house is there. Okay, I was just wondering if you make it from like the beginning of the parking.
So if you look at the map, from right here, Kenwood, up to Frolic and Happiness, right here.
I was wondering if you'd stop at that other part where your entrance is? Because you're taking a garage away from that 4701.
There is one gentleman that lives in that corner house on Happiness Way and Frolic, and he does have an extra car that was set on Happiness Way. So if you block everything with Happiness Way, you're going to screw his parking up.
That's what I'm saying.
But now if you do it from the property of the business town, that'd be great.
If you do, where's that?
I think they were concerned about pushing.
And sir, I think that's something the trustees have to address in their resolution.
From here on down. You're telling me the entrance is here?
No.
Yes or no?
No, the public.
Where's the public parking? Is that, this is where my pictures are, right in the front?
I see, do you see my cursor off to the right here?
Yeah.
The public parking entrance is right here.
At the wrong. No, I'm saying public parking, but here.
She's talking about the existing garage, public parking, not the proposed.
The existing garage.
I see. I would yield any questions to the developer.
Okay, because the picture I got is right here, and from here on down, there's always parked cars.
Come around here, the entrance right down.
We wanted.
Come down here.
[laughing].
There's.
This is the entrance.
Yeah.
Right, well, this is the entrance, this is one entrance.
Well, this is, this is, I see a back of trucks, that's, this is the entrance.
Well, that's trucks, those are trucks, okay, that's the entrance, okay.
There are two entrances to the garage, one is here and one is here.
Oh, that's a good one.
Well, that's the one that Jeff was, you know, kept referring to, that the main, the main entrance is here, and there's also a secondary entrance.
So this is going to be, this is going to be the public one?
They are both public access.
Okay, sir, give us your name.
My name is John Rising. I live at 7918 Frolic Drive, and the Aspire building is basically my backyard. I have a couple of questions, and I think it, that I'd like to start with. Number one, when you did the, when you walked us through the proposal, which was very strong, by the way, when you, when you talk about staff, staff recommendations, who is that staff?
Myself.
So it's, okay. The second thing, or question I had, will the township or will capital investment be doing a traffic study for the neighbor, for the neighborhood side of the development?
A traffic study has been completed, and they've provided an amendment or an update to the trip generation study.
And that's the Wolfert study?
That's correct.
And that's the one that was done in 2018?
It's been updated, I believe.
What was the update?
I would yield to the applicant. They updated the trip generation study, which was.
Right, but it's not, it wasn't a study in the neighborhood, it was just at the Kenwood side.
I'm not a traffic engineer, but I understand a traffic engineer looks at the whole road network, including all roads.
Yeah, I would like you to be mindful that the traffic study that Wolfert did on the first part of this project, they, out of what they called a courtesy, not out of an obligation, they did a one-hour study on a Wednesday afternoon, which is sort of laughable. And I guess my concern is with something this dense and this big, obviously there's going to be huge traffic impacts, so I would beg this commission to take a hard look at that and consider asking out of professional courtesy to do a real traffic study, especially for the neighborhood that is on the back of Aspire. I think the last thing I have tonight, if you could briefly explain after tonight's meeting what the procedure or what the timeline looks like moving forward.
The, the board would vote and make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees.
Is that tonight?
That's tonight. They would make a recommendation and vote.
Got it.
And then at the, I believe the first trustee meeting in February, which I believe is February 6th, I believe, yeah, first Tuesday of February, the Board of Trustees will hold a zoning commission, zoning meeting to review this case, and the Board of Trustees would make a decision on February 6th.
Okay.
On this case.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I would also note that for the February 6th meeting, the township will send out all, notice to all the, notice, or all the houses in the Happiness Acres subdivision, which included all the way down to Orchard. So this basically whole block of housing, so.
Anyone else? Sir, come up, give us your name.
Yeah, my name's Taft Hall. I'm at 4658 Largo Drive. And I'm going to go to the other side of this, is I've lived in Sycamore Township for over 60 years, and I've had my own home here now for 30 years. And the tax base in Sycamore Township is incredibly low, and I'm now retired, and I like the tax base being low. The Town Center supports that low tax base, and I think adding more residents closer to the Town Center, the Kenwood Town Center, would only help that. And I'm totally in favor of this. I think that we got to look forward of, you know, progress. Some people don't like the word, I do like the word. When they built the redstone, I was afraid that was going to be this big building right in, I mean, I walk out my front door and there's the redstone. I don't even notice it anymore. I mean, it's just become a fabric, part of the fabric of Sycamore Township. And I think this building would be the same way, is the traffic from the apartment building. And I would like to know, the lady asked how many apartments have been leased in the Aspire? I think that would be, because I don't, I don't see any increased traffic where we are. I mean, none at all. And they all said that, yeah, it was going to be just a mob. I mean, Christmas at Kenwood Road this year wasn't even that bad. You know, it's, I don't know how they've timed the lights, what they've done and everything, but traffic just isn't that bad. Last thing I just want to say is, the concerns about helicopters, yes, helicopters fly over our house all day, all night. I mean, it's part of being next to a hospital. I'm sure the FAA has guidelines as to a building such as this is lighting in place for, for, you know, to make sure that nothing happens of that nature. And I'm sure the pilots of the helicopters are very, very, very good to land, I mean, on a little platform on top of a hospital. I don't see that as an issue. Yes, I agree with you, sir, that FAA should be involved in, you know, knowing about the building and any questions they might have about it. But I just wanted to say, I look forward to progress in the community. I mean, it's, I kid around with my wife saying the only way they're going to get me out of my house is I'm going to be horizontal. You know, I love Sycamore Township, I love this community, and I love seeing it grow. And I think this is a big step forward on that, instead of that big dirt hole that's been sitting there for ever and ever. So, that's just my two cents.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Can I say something?
You did, but we'll give you a little more time here.
You know, I didn't want to say, he talked about no more traffic. He does live on Frolic, and that cut across there, that's all your traffic. Ain't no tunnel in history.
Yeah, he's on Largo.
I mean, he's away from it.
Anyone else? Mr. Greco, if you don't mind coming back up to the stand.
I see you.
Couple of questions were raised during the town at there. Thank you, chief. With regard to the traffic study, I know we've had some information, the traffic study was updated since the initial traffic study. Do you happen to know when the update occurred?
I could pull it up on my phone, I don't off the top of my head. It was, it was in the past, you know, number of months in preparation for this meeting, we had the traffic study redone. I could, you know, I'll pull it up and look at the exact dates.
And just.
Yeah.
When you find this, find it, let us know.
So, Mr. Chair, here it is, here it is. It was a June 6, 2023 memo to Jeff Newby from Keegan Anderson, PE from Wolfert. And this was the amendment to the trip generation comparison study. It was a two-page document that was in the public documents that was on the website.
Okay, and also a question was raised about the occupancy rate, I guess, at the Aspire. Do you have any information about that?
Yeah, I might be off by a percentage point or two, but it's 93% occupied and 97% leased, I believe. So the, you know, that 4% difference is people that have leases that are, they're moving in in the next couple of months. But, yeah, in that 90, you know, they're in that 90-plus percent range.
Okay, thank you. I think that answered a couple of questions that were raised. Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
There was a question about the traffic, the initial traffic study and the scope of it. Did it take into account the neighborhood in the back?
I, I do not know, to be honest with you.
You did not? It was only a one-day study?
Correct. This, this, well, I would gladly go to the mic and explain that situation.
I don't know. I mean, the traffic studies typically are more than one day.
Yeah, I would have expected so. And I would have expected the traffic study for this here would have included more than just Kenwood Road.
On the, on the memo that was provided by Mr. Anderson, he notes that in their engineering judgment, this, the increase that is proposed here, in this proposal I mentioned, thinks of two restaurants, and there might not, may not be two restaurants, they note that this increase is negligible when compared to the total amount of traffic on Kenwood Road and when distributed across the roadway network. They also note when spread across the peak hour, the total increase is less than a one-car-per-signal cycle length, and is not sufficient to require an update to the original approved TIS, and that comes from a traffic engineer. That's down here on the.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Greco. Okay.
Excuse me, can the commission propose a traffic study of the back streets, the neighborhood behind it? It sounds like they're just doing Kenwood Road and, you know.
I don't know what was done or not done. I would, I would, I can't speak on, you know, we don't have anything in front of us right now.
I, I would note that the Hamilton County Engineers' Office did not write back to CIG or the township noting that the, you know, there needs to be a new traffic study or that the findings in this update were not sufficient. They did not note a new traffic study was needed, I would note that.
With all due respect, that, from the county's perspective, they're probably only looking at the Kenwood Road. So the first study done by Wolfert in 2018 was very comprehensive for this project, but again, it was only for the Kenwood Road in Montgomery area, just in that little swath. Out of, out of what they call the courtesy, they did do one for the neighborhood, and it was for one day, for one hour. And I remember sitting here, because we all laughed at that, when the representative from Wolfert came up to give us comments, that it was done in such, just sort of a flip way like that. So that's why I would think doing a little bit more comprehensive of study into the neighborhood to see what, you know, we're the ones that are being impacted with the traffic. I think that would be a good, a good step forward.
Anyone on the commission have any comments or questions or care to make a motion?
Just one point on the conditions, and one of these days I'll do it, I'll number the conditions, I apologize, but I numbered each bullet point. What would be number nine? I would propose that condition to be rewritten to basically saying, on the materials key, in addition, or in addition of a curtain wall material line as item 14. Condition 10 would be the landscaping, then condition 11, I might relate to just a requirement to document or follow all related FAA regulations. to document or follow all related FAA regulations related to helicopters, something along those lines.
Well, yeah, I'd like to add though, too, that, that we get some feedback from Jewish Hospital.
Mercy, yeah. So documentation related to FAA helicopter regulations, and plus, or in addition to feedback from Mercy Health.
Okay. Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move that we consider case number 23, excuse me, 2023-17MA as presented by the applicant in his submittal documents this evening. I will not address the conditions at the moment. We, I suggest we have discussion and then pursue any conditions.
Okay. And second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Mase. Any further comments? Mr. Mase?
Well, I think that you've raised some good points about the helicopter and the feedback from Jewish Hospital. Is that something that we can make condition? Are you looking for that information in advance of kind of going forward from here?
I could think that we make the condition.
Okay. And then, I, you know, my, my experience with traffic studies is there's generally an agreed-upon scope between the traffic engineer and the governing body, whether that's Hamilton County's Traffic Department. I would be shocked if the neighborhood was not taken into account with the initial traffic study, but I haven't read the traffic study since it was presented years and years ago, so I don't know if that is indeed the case. But I think I'd like to see that we have some confirmation that the traffic study that was done before took into account the neighborhood, so that the updated memo that came to the conclusion that this change of use provided a de minimis, you know, impact to the, to the initial traffic study. I'd like to just kind of verify that that, that initial traffic study did indeed take into account the, the community behind.
So if added, that would be condition 12.
Condition, I would suggest. My other comment, I guess, the monument signs to me seem a little bit repetitive since there's going to be sufficient signage on the building. It doesn't seem that this is a multi-tenant type of a situation. There would need to be kind of a listing, but I think that they need to be smaller away or just kind of go away.
Essentially. Well, I think what I'm hearing is that there'd be only one monument sign.
Right.
Yeah, I would agree. If there's signage on.
The building.
The building for the residence inn.
If you have a multi-
People aren't going to be confused about where the residence inn is.
There doesn't need to be another monument sign saying this is a residence inn.
Right. Any other comments?
So, so if amended for condition three, there would only be one, you propose one monument sign, and that would be for the Encore?
That's correct.
At the dimensions that they proposed, which would be the 14 feet wide, the three-and-a-half feet deep, and the six feet tall?
Sure.
No, 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 it's other way around. The Encore was 10 and a half feet wide, three and a half feet deep, six feet tall.
Right. Mr. Barrick?
Yes, I have a, it's a serious concern on the height of the building. Overall, I appreciate your comment on the FAA. I really had considered that part of it, but I think, given the overall urban character of the, this Kenwood area that we're, we're starting to see evolve here, I have no objection to increased densities and everything, but I think the height of this building right along the Kenwood Road starts to set a precedent that we have to think about as we pursue further development down here. First off, I guess the, looking at that cross-section sketch that, Jeff, could you put that back up on the screen?
Was it this one?
No, the, the sightline.
Oh, oh, yes, yes. This one.
Yeah. The proposed building is, if I get the math correct, approximately 70 feet taller than Aspire, which is approximately 60 feet above ground. So that's over twice, I guess, the height of what we're looking at out there right now. So if you could flip back to the rendering then again. Just, you see the Aspire building in the background, I guess, the fact that this building we're looking at right here is double, over double the height of what we've got out there, and it's right on Kenwood Road, I guess, right at the, pretty close to right of way for all respects. So just starting to think, okay, if this is building one of the supersizing, if you will, I guess, of Kenwood Road and this whole area, Jewish Hospital could easily come back and say, well, I think my proposed building at the corner of Happiness and Kenwood on the other side should easily be the same height. And then we start seeing that going around. We can easily see the opposite side of Kenwood Road where the town center is. We could see a medical office building coming in over there at same height, 10 stories. All of a sudden, we have a major change in the characteristics of the Kenwood core, if you will. So I do kind of object to the staff report that this has minimal impact, I guess, to the characteristics of the neighborhood. I think this starts to set a precedent of a major change in the overall density of our area. So I would recommend that we limit the height of this building to 100 feet, as was approved in the previous case, which would put us still, I guess, about 40 feet taller than Aspire versus 70 feet taller.
What was the height of the Jewish Hospital, the one they were talking about building?
If the two additional floors would be proposed and added, it would be approximately 133.66 feet. Currently, it's at 105.66 feet to the top. The Jewish addition would account for a building that would be about 11 feet shorter than the proposed Encore, if the addition, if the addition was added.
And I think with that Jewish hospital, if that did look two more stories, that would be closer to this proposed Encore. But you also have to look at the sighting of it. It does, I think, has a corner that sticks out close to Galway, but the mass of the building is back away from the two major intersections, so you don't have, what I'm starting to see is like a canyon effect, I guess, of these buildings right out on the property. So I'm less concerned about Jewish. I know there was a long discussion that many years ago. I don't recall the detail of the extra two stories, but there was discussion about the sighting of it, the sightlines, and everything else, and we did put some buffering in, and it does sit back, like I say, most areas quite a distance back from the major streets.
Well, I kind of wonder about the whole character, the whole area between, there's development opportunity between Jewish Hospital and this project as well.
Yes.
And then even farther south from here all the way down to Montgomery. But I mean, do you think the whole corridor is changing that way?
Right.
We may be seeing more and more heavier development for taller buildings like this. I do think it's kind of classic zoning hierarchy to be, you know, at the, at the commercial road with the taller buildings, and then it's stepping back to the, to the smaller building behind with the apartments as it steps back to the, to the neighborhood.
Yeah, I can-
Certainly know a lot of planners who love buildings right up along the sidewalk, and they'd be promoting that, that, you know, those buildings should be right up against the sidewalk. So that, the fact that it's uptight to the, to the sidewalk, isn't it, doesn't concern me. I would say that's kind of classic planning.
Yeah, I would be less concerned if it was on the opposite side of Kenwood Road and maybe sit back a little bit, perhaps some, some open air around it, or, which, you know, that's something that the board or township should address at some point, maybe, is more of a density study as far as that whole area, which we really haven't gotten into as far as long-range planning, but.
But I think our land use plan would currently permit that, wouldn't it?
It only addresses the 40 feet, and I think there was some reference to going up a little taller, if I remember, I had a note here, on the town center. I think that's the only one that they talked about going a little taller. And it did say 75 feet on the town center property, but not on, not on the west side of Kenwood Road. All the other descriptive areas talk just about heights. I believe they were recognizing that they could be taller than 40 feet, but they didn't get into what the height should be. So things like Redstone and things like that, I think, four- to six-story buildings, I think that was, seems to be the norm of what was discussed at the land use plan time.
So your thought of 100 feet, is that, is that a certain number of floors that you're having in mind, or?
I would just cap it at that, you know, if that means dropping the parking down or something. I don't know where they work with that, but I drew at the 100 feet based off of the approval from prior on this, on this partial.
Looks like it would probably take two floors off.
It could be.
Just to note, the approved office building was, was 100.5 feet, just the extra half-foot. And I, and speaking to the applicant, the, the 45 parking spaces is very important to the development folks, because you have, you have another building, and if there is immediate parking underneath, that is convenient for some of the office folks or restaurant folks, I think. But of course, you know, as we've mentioned, the site is rather overparked, so there's enough parking, but that, that parking was important to the applicant from a, I guess, a use management perspective.
Mr. Thompson?
I don't really have any concerns.
Mr. Barrick, do you want to amend your motion?
Sure. I will amend, propose to amend the motion based on some bullet points that were addressed by the staff report, and I will add a number, numerical definition as we get on the list. So item one, all conditions of case 2018-12P2 are in full force and effect unless modified by this case. Number two, the wall signs shall conform with the site arrangement and dimensions as shown or amended. Number three, I would propose that, that would read, one monument sign will be allowed on the property, and would, I could ask staff to give me that size.
Allowed on the property, be 10 and a half feet wide, three and a half feet deep, six feet tall, with a zero foot allowed setback on Kenwood Road. Then, of course, the base would need to be masonry under the zoning resolution.
This would be adjacent to the Encore building, correct?
Yes. Okay. And then, item four, on the western elevation, no wall signs shall be sighted above the third floor. Item five, digital signs, parentheses, EMC, shall not be used on wall signs or monument signs for the subject property. Item six, all lighting associated with Encore shall conform with the zoning resolution standard of one-half foot candle at the property line. Item seven, ground floor one of Encore may be used for any combination of office, retail, or restaurant uses. Item eight, Encore shall be designed and permitted as high-rise structure and follow all relevant high-rise, high-rise building and fire code requirements. Encore shall be designed to integrate a radio repeating system if required by testing prior to consideration of township and county certificates of occupancies. At least one elevator from the garage, the penthouse will be sized to accommodate an EMS transport gurney, shall be incorporated into the Encore project. All elements related to this condition, unless specifically stated otherwise, shall be incorporated into plans prior to the issue of township zoning certificates. Item nine, let's see, we may want to amend this one, right?
It would just simply be the, on the material, on the material, on the material key, the addition of a curtain wall system as item 14, and then the drawing would also be amended to show curtain wall, item 14.
Okay, so number nine, on the building, material key designation number 14 shall be added to address a material, excuse me, a metal glass storefront window wall system.
No, no, a curtain, a curtain wall.
Okay, I'll start over, I'll start over. On the building material key, item number 14 shall be added to indicate a curtain wall system at the corners of the building, the retail area.
On Kenwood Road.
Okay. And then, second sentence, unless, amend that all materials shall, all building materials shall comply with representations made in this case. Item 10, all landscape on a 7.16 acre subject property shall be maintained in healthy condition. Item 11, that access for helicopter, flight paths, I guess, should be addressed with Jewish Hospital, make sure that it's in compliance with their emergency needs.
Right. And also meeting the FAA requirements.
And meeting FAA requirements. Item 12, that a traffic study be incorporated to consider impacts of the adjoining residential streets.
I would suggest or verify that the existing one does.
Okay. Okay, let's say that the existing traffic report from the initial project development shall be presented to staff to, to confirm that residential streets were included. Okay.
Anything else?
And I would like to add, item number 13, that the overall height of the building not exceed 105, 100 feet and one-half, excuse me, 100.5 feet above sidewalk level.
Anyone care to second that?
Mr. Bruce? Are we basically going to say that they're not going to be able to build this building at the items in now?
That's what the last item is on the motion that Mr. Barrick has made.
My personal feeling is I, I believe the project is viable the way it is. I don't think if we lower the, you know, at least listening to what the builder said, it's not feasible to make this with a smaller building and make it viable as far as financially probably. I'm sorry. I said, like, in talking to the builder, it sounds like that adding, you know, making a building smaller than this would not be viable as far as financially for them to build it, is what I'm saying, you know, so. My feeling is that it's, you know, as Mr. Mase said, I think more and more of these buildings are being built, I mean, you know, Blue Ash, for instance, have got high-rises, you know, that are really tall, too. So, I mean, I believe that it's kind of the way that the economy's going like this, at this present time.
Mr. Barrick has made a motion. Any, any second. Motion fails for a second. Mr. Barrick has made a motion. Any, any second. Motion else for a second? Anyone care to make another motion?
Now, we're, the motion to amend.
Excuse me.
I would make a motion that we consider without the, the height requirement with all the other recommendations, the other, the other 12.
Which would be number, consider it without number 13 that was added by Mr. Barrick.
Right.
Any second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So, we have before us the motion with 12 items added to recommendations. The 13th item brought up by Mr. Barrick is not included to limit the height of the building to 100.5 feet. That's been seconded. Mr. Mase, do you want to take the roll call on that?
Sure.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Barrick?
No.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Ruse?
Yes.
Yes, as well.
Okay. Mr. Ockert, this goes to the trustees. I think you indicated on February?
February 6, Tuesday, and then the time will be TBD, but we will send out notice to all residents. We'll post it on the website, and we will put a sign out.
Okay. Thank you all for coming this evening and your comments. It will be gone on our agenda. We have no other new cases coming before us.
Correct. That's correct.
The item from Atlantic Sign Company under 2023-16MA is still on for the February meeting.
It is, but it would not surprise me if it were pushed to the March meeting.
The township have anything else to report to us?
Not at this time.
Okay. The next meeting of the zoning commission is February the 12 at 6:00 p.m. Undertained a motion to adjourn.
So is it?
Still moved by Mr. Mase?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ruse. All in favor?
Aye.
To adjourn. Thank you all.